It is 7:00 on Tuesday, June 4th. I'd like to call this meeting of the Urbana City Council Committee of the Hall back from recess. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hershey?
Ms. Colasetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilkin?
Here.
Mr. Cuisinbarry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
All right, the next item on our agenda, which we started yesterday, is a discussion item regarding Ward Maps continuing discussion.
So, there's no staff presentation for this? There's a continuing discussion?
We just talk.
So, I can go up front if you want to look at the maps during the discussion? Or... Okay.
I think that would be helpful, Will. Thank you. All right, we have the maps available. I want to get the discussion started. Grace?
So, I guess recap and reminders on where we left off. We had these top three maps. We got seven emails of public input, right? Well, it seemed like most of them in favor of Map 2, one for Map 1, another one, I don't know if it was specific about a particular map in favor. What I thought was interesting from the comments, a few of them mentioned looking at actual voter activity. I don't know if that's something we're even allowed to. I think it's probably based on street population. But they were mentioning, like, for example, in campus area, or I think some wards in previous elections, there's what, like, 100 people who vote or something and determine the entire ward? So, I think that was brought up in two emails, which I thought was interesting, but I don't know if we have any wiggle room to really account for that in a meaningful way.
James?
Yeah, the requirements are that the map is based on population. And I know, I know there's, it's been a longstanding commentary in this community about the participation or lack of participation of student voters and how that, there's been times where people have talked about creating a student ward that would be essentially packed with students. That's, that looks towards having representation that really represents the students, but it also has had concerns when, when that's been raised, that students are not, don't typically stay in that area because most of those residents are in university housing, most of whom don't live more than one year, very few live more than two years. So, there's a lot of transition there. So, historically, as we've seen, the maps have been, have had these kind of vertical, or these horizontal bars to distribute student population into different wards. But we, I don't think we can base our map on whether we think the population will vote or not. It's also, I mean, that would be equivalent to say basing it on, you know, eligible voters, which is a, which is a different thing altogether and which has also come up. That's not the basis of how the maps are set up. They're supposed to be based on population to have representation based on how many people live there, not whether they vote or not whether they are eligible to vote or not. It's to make sure everybody has that representation in the, in the local government. So, while I understand where that feedback comes from, and it's historically been a conversation in this community as long as I've been here, I don't think the reality of the, of the map and what we have to draw the map by lets us take that feedback and do something about it.
Any other comments? Grace?
So, just repeat, it seems like Map 2, Finalist 2, is seeming to kind of be the preferred one. I definitely agree that the campus area likely makes way more sense with someone being more intimate with it, knowledgeable with that area. As I've said, I think it does change the south part of town. Ward 6 looks very different. I did mess around with this map, too, and just kind of focused on that south part of town. I emailed that out to council, and I think particularly James and Jaya figuring out 7 and 4. And James did make some tweaks to 7. And Will, I just emailed you that one. I don't know if it's possible to pull that up if we wanted to consider just a few modifications, knowing that it would still need legal review and those kinds of things, but if we could make some modifications that might make sense for each ward.
Chandra?
Can we modify this map? That's, I mean, you said slight modifications, but if it's already... Are we allowed to modify the ones that already exist?
Yeah, the process is the process that council decides, so it's up to you.
Gotcha. Thanks.
James?
So, I don't want to put words in Grace's mouth, but Grace took a look at it, I think, from Ward 6's perspective, and created a map that had some adjustments that she was comfortable with and shared that. When I looked at it, the balance was not where it needed to be because it wasn't focusing on 4 or 7 and a little bit of 5. And so, I, I took some time to look at it to see how it could be balanced. And if you, if you get the link, you could probably show it when you look in your email.
So...
So, what ended up happening with, with those adjustments was Ward 7 and Wards 4 start to look more like what they currently look like, with part of Orchard Downs, Ward 7 growing back towards the east and part of Orchard Downs being part of Ward 7, and Ward 4 returning to move across the line that historically has had as a part of it. And it ends up with a, with a balance that is, I think, defensible from a, from a legal standpoint. And so, I think it's a war, a map that could be used. I think it's worth, if we, if we can have a look at it, I was, I was comfortable moving, like I said previously, I was comfortable moving ahead with Finalist 2, which is what we're looking at now. But when Grace, you know, shared this thing, I did, I gave, gave an effort to see how that could be modified into something that would be legal. And the only thing that's appealing to me about it, you know, I try not to have Ward 7's, you know, continuity, historical continuity at the core of what I'm trying to suggest here, but I do kind of, I did kind of feel that we had some discussion about trying to keep the wards closer to where they'd been. And so, that's why I took the time to take a look at it.
And I'm sorry, Grace, I had missed that email, so thank you for showing it to me earlier.
This computer doesn't have email on it, so I would have to...
Can you send it out to city council?
Yes, definitely. Just be nice to see it.
I can resend it to everyone.
Okay, yeah, you got it.
Did not want to send it to everyone because that would have been discussion via email.
While that's getting sent out, or is there any other discussion on the Ward Maps?
I guess the bigger question is, is this different enough to warrant a need for legal review? And if so, does it go back out for public comment? And that's going to push things back potentially two weeks at the minimum. Are you comfortable doing that? That'll mean July probably for final approval.
Yeah, I guess we can do a straw poll if, if people are comfortable with potentially pushing this out for legal review and further public comment, please. Is that a question or raising?
Question.
Mary Alice?
So, my, I guess my, my main question is, is it, is it necessary for us to have feedback from the community since we've gotten some feedback just in generalities, not in particulars about the specific streets that are cut off and so forth? Of course, it's necessary for us to do legal review on any new map, but I guess that was a question I was going to pose to the group.
Any thoughts on that? Grace?
I was thinking similar things that, yeah, the comments that we have received, I think, are pretty general. I don't know that this would really go for or against any of the things that were mentioned so far, but I think it's always nice to let people have another review in case something comes up, but I agree, it's probably not absolutely necessary. And I think the timeline, if you could remind us right, Dan, we're just want to make it soon enough so that people know where to run in the upcoming collection, but we don't have a hard due date. Is that right?
No, but the sooner the better in terms of people thinking about this over the summer. Typically, I mean, petitioning for city council seats will start late August, early September, so it's coming up pretty fast.
Actually, I don't believe it starts until October. It starts later than the, the election cycle. Municipal starts later than...
It's traditionally been...
Filing usually is in the first week of December for municipal.
So, you can circulate before you can file. I believe you can start circulating in August, September, but you can't file.
You start circulating way earlier than filing.
Yeah, I, I believe it is like very, very late August, early September that you could start circulating.
They haven't released the documents yet.
They have not released the stuff yet.
So, we don't know.
No.
But it takes time to think about it and plan, and you have to understand where you live and relationship to the ward you live in. So, so, to be fair to the public who are contemplating, the sooner the better.
Grace?
Oops, I had another question that's come up. My understanding is that anyone running for an elected position has to live in the ward for at least a year. And then, what about if someone doesn't move, but the ward changes? And okay, if that needs to be researched later, totally fine, but that's kind of come up, too, especially as we may be drastically changing some wards. I would imagine there's an exemption for that.
So, I'm definitely going to need to research that, but they're always going to be in a ward. It just not, it might not be the same ward that they had hoped to run in, but they will still be in a ward, and I don't believe that would preclude them from running in the ward that they're currently in.
Thank you, but just like if the number changed, like now someone who was in 6 is in 5, and they want to run in 5, but they haven't lived in Ward 5 for a year because they weren't in 6, even at the same location.
But they have lived in the house for a year.
Correct. In Urbana, yeah.
Sharice?
I guess what I, my, my comment is, I thought, I thought the way that the wards were supposed to be redrawn was so that the older person that is currently in the ward... So, what you're talking about is if somebody wants to run and the boundaries get changed and their house happens to be on the cusp or the perimeter?
Not an incumbent, someone who wants to run for the first time.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah. Yes.
I was just trying to understand.
I will get a definite answer on that, to be clear, but, but again, like my off-the-hip is that it would not preclude them from running so long as they've lived here for a year. They would just run in the new number.
The map should have gone out to everyone. Maybe council members can share so that we are all looking at the same thing.
Could we hook up another computer or something? Do we need to be projecting it if we are all looking at it and working on it?
The livestream hookups to different computers with network access is probably more difficult and time-consuming. The quickest thing, if you want to do this live, is I would run up and save that as a PDF or print screen and then put it on a flash drive on this one.
But then we can't work, can I, we even just old-school, like, just type out the webpage?
On, is it a...
On Dave's redistricting.
So, I can go to Dave's redistricting and...
But then, can you find this map that James made without this exact link? I'm saying, can I just show you?
Probably not without having the link.
So, I think the suggestion would be if one of us brings it over to write it directly, the whole link in, if we could try that.
We can try it. No promises, but...
Mary Alice has made a shorter link.
So, if you just go to HTTPS backslash backslash tiny URL. All right, HTTPS forward slash, colon forward slash forward slash tinyurl.com/33p5mxmv.
Too fast.
Sorry. All right. I said 33.
All right. Teamwork. So, we now have projected the modified version of Finalist map number 2 to review as a council for further discussion. I do appreciate this is closer to the current fourth ward configuration.
I did look at the quick stats, and it looks like there's two non-contiguous. Now, one of them is that square, which should be Ward 6. I don't know what's non-contiguous with Ward 5. Maybe it's the white space. Okay, that's fine. There you go. That's not fine.
Some of the slivers are just small when you're zoomed out. They get missed when you're clicking around.
Absolutely.
James?
I guess, I guess my question would be for the people not in Ward 4, 6, and 7 is if it's worth considering this because it does, it does, I think, answer some of our interests, but I don't think it, it makes a little bit of a change to Ward 5, but it, I think Ward 1 and Ward 2, I know Ward 3 is unchanged pretty much from Mary Alice's original map. So, is it, is it distinct enough from the original number 8, Finalist 2, to, to consider? And if so, if a majority of individuals believe that, we can fix some of the issues with it. I will point out that I also made sure Wards 1 and 2 were a little bit smaller in this, at the end of this, because we know that they're going to gain population from the census. We don't know how much, and we can't predict what that is, but a little bit of lightness there is going to be covered by things like Gather and the, and the residence halls that were closed.
Any other comments? I think these are good changes, personally. I'm curious if there are any, any other comments? Grace?
Just trying to, look, I haven't reviewed James's modifications as closely. There were a few little tweaks I had to make to 6, but yeah, I think that this is closer, and I'm not sure exactly the process. Like, I'd be happy to go up and click around and see if it still balances out if we're trying to finalize something right now.
I think it would be helpful to have a recommendation that we can move, well, not a formal recommendation, but decide if we're ready to move forward with this one. Mary Alice?
I, I think that any further modifications at this point, I mean, you, you can't really get closer than 8 to negative 57 in terms of the number of population within these wards. Of course, it's going to change slightly with those two non-contiguous things, but not much. Any tweaking then is going to make that a larger difference. So, I would be good with this moving forward for legal review after we do those small modifications.
Grace?
So, you're saying with small modification, I guess, asking if it's okay for chair and council and the rules, if I could click around, make proposed changes? Because what I'm getting at is I do think that that Learman-Rainbow area is historic, has been a kind of piece of Ward 6 that would be very different and would swap out like the corner of Washington for a key neighborhood. Because this is the parts where I can see how, just looking at the map, you know, you can, it's hard to contextualize some of those details.
Any objection to Grace going and clicking? James?
Well, I can tell you that from, from playing around with that, that's going to change 5 and 6 populations significantly because those are, those are populated areas, so you're going to end up with a, a map that's, again, unbalanced with, with 5 being small and, and not likely to recapture that population.
Grace?
Thank you. So, yes, absolutely, which is why, James, I meant to ask you about this, too. In the modifications that I proposed for 6, I took a chunk out of east of Philo that I think is Eagle Ridge. I was trying to line up the maps to have Sona all together because my understanding that would have all or almost all of Sona in one ward, which does or doesn't have to be that way, but that was kind of my thought of swap of keep Learman-Rainbow area in 6 and unite Sona in 7. And that's how I had it balanced out in mind to 5,300 people in Ward 6.
Yeah, again, Eagle Ridge is a significant number of, amount of population, both because of Eagle Ridge and Prairie Winds on, on the south side of Colorado. So, when you do that, 7 becomes unbalanced, becomes too big. I mean, whenever you move that kind of thing, everything else has to shift around to, to do it. So, I feel like we could, we could do that endlessly. I do understand where you're coming from with that, but I think we, I think it would be another, you know, 20 minutes of clicking around to try to balance it out.
Any other discussion on this? James?
Yeah, I'd kind of like to see us move ahead either with the original Finalist number 2 or, or this modification rather than continue to trade small blocks here and there.
Maybe we can do a straw poll, starting with this one, just to see if you would feel comfortable moving this one forward of the two options, please raise your hand.
I'm sorry, what two options are we talking about? This versus the original one?
This versus the one that is modified from.
Okay, as an either/or?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I take it back. I think I liked the original 8.
Okay, I think that's the majority. I guess we can do a, yeah, I think that was 5. So, I think it seems like we're probably at a place of recognizing that there are some minor modifications for the non-contiguous pieces that need to be addressed, but that we're ready to send this for legal review unless there's any further discussion on this. Grace?
I will just say this far as 6, I think this looks like a pretty affluent ward for the most part, which is what I was kind of hoping to avoid. It seemed like it was kind of a suburban affluent outer area of town ward before, and that was one of my things I was trying to avoid, and it just does seem like now it's Myra Ridge, Stone Creek. You know, there are, there's a little bit of diversity, a few apartment complexes, but it's mostly pretty affluent suburban neighborhoods, which is what I was trying to have a little more diverse representation.
Mayor Marlin?
The question is, do you want it out for public comment? Are you comfortable sending this to Will to get it into GIS so we can get an ordinance for final approval?
James?
Well, I, I kind of feel like it, it should be shared with the public as the one that we're proceeding with. If we, if we don't want to, well, ordinance would have to come at the next committee of the hall.
Yeah, it's going to take a couple of weeks to get this legal review and into GIS.
We could have this at least shared on the website for a week before we...
Sure, we can do it simultaneously, actually.
Okay.
This is the one...
They, they should have a chance to take a look at it. I don't, I don't know that we'll get much different feedback then, but they should have the opportunity.
Okay, so we'll do it simultaneously, and this should come to council, committee of the hall for the 17th, if all works. And we'll get a final approval by the 24th, so then by July 1st, the community will have a Ward map.
All right, any final discussion on this before we move on? Grace and James, thank you for your work on that. Grace, I know it's not exactly what you were hoping for, but I think getting additional time with this is, is very helpful. Well, thanks for being flexible on pulling those up. We do have one more discussion item, which is a budget discussion.
I just have a little bit of information to share based on what was shared with me by a couple of council members in terms of their ideas about what could be added to the budget or removed from the budget. So, first of all, I'm going to say these are suggestions from council members, not recommendations from the mayor. So, there are a couple of revisions that I know at this point will include it in the bud, will be included in the budget ordinance that are recommendations from staff, and I wanted to make sure that you're aware of those because that potentially impacts the discussion that you're going to have tonight. So, first of all, we did not know at the time we put together the proposed budget that there would be a delay in implementing the elimination of the grocery tax that the governor proposed, but when the final budget was approved by the legislature, that was delayed until January 1, 2026. And so, in the budget ordinance, we will show that $1 million in the budget, but we'll be counting it as one-time revenue because we don't expect to have that into the future indefinitely. Second item to be aware of is we discovered, unfortunately, after we had already put the proposed budget out, that there was a mismatch between two sides of a transfer between funds, so a transfer from the general fund to the capital improvement fund, and reconciling that is going to result in an $800,000 increase in expenditures in the general fund, which is a one-time expense, and so that's largely, well, that's entirely offset by the timing of the grocery tax. Also, for some reason, there was an entry that we made that just didn't get reflected, which is the, several years ago, when funding was moved from a police officer position into police admin to fund the Berry Dunn... police officer position into police admin to fund the Barry Dunn study, that remained there and it was rolled over a couple of times. But at this point, now that the Barry Dunn study is well underway, we can use that money to fund changes in the police department. So that will reduce recurring expenditures by $105,000. So just looking at those items, what I see as the estimated bottom line before any further changes are done, and this is, these are kind of round numbers, right? There are going to be other small changes. You're used to seeing a lot of changes in the budget ordinance, is that we have about $679,000 total available for additional expenditures, and about $105,000 of that is available for recurring expenditures. But 609 is an upper limit for all the additional expenditures, net, of course, of any reductions, which could be used to offset new expenditures. So I organized the items that I received into a couple of buckets. There were several items that were potential new recurring expenses. There were potential one-time expenses. And then the third grouping is potential savings that could be used to offset expenses. So in terms of potential new recurring expenses, there was a request for an arbor technician. The cost for that would be $95,000 on a recurring basis and $32,250 one-time for initial equipment for that position to function appropriately. Second one was three additional social workers that would have a recurring cost of about $350,000. And then the last one was a general request for a non-police alternative response model. We don't have a cost for that, so I'm not quite sure how we could budget it, but that was a request. Then there were a number of requests for potential one-time expenses. So these are, a number of things on this page are, fall under the general category of human services. So the items that were provided were reentry services, drug and alcohol treatment, housing and relocating domestic violence victims, tenant-based rental assistance, scholarships for the trades and hospitality industry, scholarships to the Illinois Fire Service Institute, and funding a Park District summer jobs program. All of those, I think, kind of fall under the general category of human services. Generally, when we funded those types of programs in the past, we've used some kind of allocation process so that the council, the whole council can participate in that discussion. Also, of course, we'd want to make sure those are outcome-oriented with some established performance metrics. All of that would require some staff time to kind of manage that process. The last two items on this list, small business grants and a tourist and entertainment district are potential TIF expenses. Depending on the location, I think the tourist and entertainment district, the request specifically related to downtown, which is within the central TIF. Small business grants, I don't think there was a specific location noted, but that may, some of those could fall within one of the TIFs. Then there were potential reductions, and those proposals included increasing the fire station bonding from $9 million to $10 million, which would reduce the general fund transfer to support the fire station construction by $1 million. So that would free up one-time money in the general fund. The, there is a cost of that, of course, because if we're going to issue more debt, we're going to pay more interest on the debt. And I think over the 10 years that we'd take to pay off the debt, that cost would be about $220,000. Can't say exactly because we won't know the rate on the bonds until we actually issue them. There were various suggestions regarding police staffing. And so ultimately, there were different parts and pieces. And there was a suggestion to eliminate all the police staffing increases. What I did here is I just listed all of those items individually, and they could, of course, be added together to make a larger number. So patrol staffing increasing by one officer rather than five, recurring savings of $540,000, one-time savings of $227,000. I also listed the number there for the five officers. With this one, remember that two of those are backfill for a second deputy chief and for a training sergeant. So it's not just simply eliminating patrol officers. The community engagement team, which includes three officers, that the cost for that, and that is in the budget, is a one-time expense. So if we eliminate it, would be a one-time savings, $476,000 in FY '25, and $767,000, which we've marked as assigned and fund balance to pay for the second and third years of a pilot program. Community service representatives, there are two in the budget, $224,000 in recurring cost and $46,000 in one-time cost. And then there is one social worker included in the proposed budget, which is $117,000 annually. Remember too, that if we're talking about police officers, that we'll have to do a little bit of more work on that outside of the room. They don't necessarily divide evenly because we might add, for example, one patrol vehicle for every, you know, say, two or three officers. So we'd have to kind of think about if there's a desire to change those numbers, then what does that look like?
Just a point of clarification of your, the second bullet point, patrol staff, one officer versus five.
Mm-hmm.
Could you explain those numbers again? The recurring savings? Like, are you saying that's the cost for one versus the cost for five?
Correct. I think that was one of the things you asked. Well, if instead of adding five, we added one, what would the savings be? And that's the answer. But if you added one instead of five, then you're not backfilling, you're definitely not backfilling both the second deputy chief position and the training sergeant that were discussed last night.
So essentially, it would cost $1,035,000 a year for one instead of $675,000 a year for five. I feel like I'm confused with the savings part. The $540 in savings is not the cost, right?
$540 would be the difference between having the five that are included in the proposed budget and having just one.
Yes, that's where I, I think if I'm doing math right, that'd be about $135,000 would be the cost for one.
Yeah, that sounds about right. I don't have a calculator here.
Sure, yeah, whatever the difference there. Thank you. I was just trying to understand.
But again, as I said, it's not necessarily evenly divisible, right? So we'll have to do some math outside of the room and get together with the chief and the deputy chief. So that is all the information that I received from council members. I realize there may be other things that you would like to talk about tonight. If it works for you, I will remain up here at the front. And it's sometimes difficult as you're engaging in discussion to make sure that I'm clear about how to translate that into the budget number. So at some point, I might just kind of wave my hand and say, hey, I need to understand what you're trying to do here. Also, of course, we want to have a balanced budget. So if I, you know, as you're making decisions, I feel like you're moving away from having a balanced budget. I may wave my hand again and say, not sure we can quite get there.
Thank you for collecting this information and sharing it. Discussion on this item?
Well, I'll just say that...
Chris, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. I just, you know, I put forth my proposals, and I did not anticipate, I forgot about adding that it would cost interest to have another million back on the fire, the bond for construction. So I guess, I suppose that needs to be factored in any decision we make. But these are all my proposals. And so I don't know how we can do this, but however you want. You guys want to talk about this or vote on this? I'm just asking for a straw poll vote.
Grace?
Thank you. And yeah, definitely willing to do a straw poll. And I think that these proposals in the budget are reasonable. I think they align with a lot of our council goals that we had established. I agree in here with what Elizabeth's saying, that, you know, it has to be a structured thing and go through grants management and, you know, be done properly. But I would support flagging money for such things in the budget. And I did want to backtrack just big picture. I think that this proposed budget is not financially responsible, in my opinion. It doesn't seem to be balanced for the future to be sustainable, the way it's proposed. I don't understand how the mayor could work hard for two terms to put the city in a better financial position and then max out the budget in the last year. I think that we're putting the next elected officials in a really difficult position. We finally resolved a $2.5 million deficit that we've learned. Capital projects are underfunded by $20 million a year. We're expecting to lose that $1 million a year from the grocery store tax coming up. We're maxing out recurring revenues and expenses that we heard in the past in these presentations last week, I think, that it's recommended that we not take on any more recurring expense after this proposal and that the budget is sustainable if we never want to add more, which to me means it's not sustainable. That it was an issue and we'd have to check if we could afford a tree arborist. And it looks like now our only available recurring funds is that $105,000 from the Barry Dunn study. There's no recurring funds left in this budget, the way I can see it and have been told to understand it. We're bringing our fund balance dangerously low. Our minimum's 25%. We're at 26.1. We will, the slide said that, you know, we'll likely not have the capacity to continue to expand services without new revenue. So that means that this will have an impact on tax revenue for the public. I just think that this financially is irresponsible for what we're setting up for the future here and limiting the next possibilities. I think as far as a lot of this money, over $2.5 million, going to police increases, I think is also, we've had enough. We've had a lot of bonuses and retentions that I've been supportive of. We had wage increases in the contracts. We've added new positions for administration and investigations. We have the new chief of police, historically extremely high salary. And now with the Barry Dunn report, this baseline staffing being based on obligated time, I think that we need to really address if that's what we want in Urbana and look towards that non-police response so that we can reduce the calls so that police can focus on what they're trained in and what they are good at and let people who are trained in what they're good at do those other things and take some of those things off the police's plate. I do really need to know about the overtime cost for the department. Sorry if I'm missing where that's spelled out in the budget, but that's absolutely something we need to know. And I'm hesitant to believe the narrative that we're so short-staffed, which I do believe and I do think we need to address. I don't want our officers overworked by any means either. But the first ask was not for patrol officers to relieve that overtime. The first ask previously was for additional things like the community engagement officers. And I still would like to see the numbers on overtime because I do think that needs to be addressed, but in a logical way with some facts and numbers to back it up. I think before we consider putting more money and expanding the police department, we need to really address some of the system. We talked about in our goals of update the police safety governance model by revising the CPRB and updating oversight policies. I think that's a huge thing to do before investing another $2.5 million here. We have a lot of issues. We need to revamp the CPRB ordinance and its role, look at complaints, use of force policy, how council and the public is involved in any of those things. So I don't agree with thinking that we have this system figured out already. I think we need to make a better informed decision when we are going to talk about investing a huge amount of money into public safety. We need to have real exploration of an alternative model. We still don't even have a cost estimate for that. And we're not going to have any money left to do it after this budget if this goes through. I think we could at least finish the Barry Dunn study if we're going to do that and see about the alternative models, get meaningful public input, see how we can work with our partners. It also seems silly that the police would connect people in need to social services that are underfunded volunteer nonprofit organizations, that we can also support them. So I don't support this police expansion, especially before meaningfully and having a complete plan and public input from experts. And even if I did support this expansion, I don't think that this budget is appropriate. And I think we are overspending and setting up the next round of people and our public to suffer from it financially. And we need to be more financially responsible.
Mayor Marlin? I wouldn't have proposed a budget I didn't believe was financially responsible. It's balanced and it's sustainable. I do think it's irresponsible to take the additional $1 million that was dedicated to fire station construction and put it toward, as it's written here, discretionary spending for council member initiatives. That's a council member earmark. And what you have before you are suggestions from one council member. There's no process, there's no procedure, and it's certainly outside our standard allocation and grant application process. It does cost money to borrow money. So an additional $1 million that we are essentially bonding is, as you heard, an additional $220,000 approximately in expenses. So there's a cost to moving that money from one-time infrastructure investment, which is a council goal and an appropriate expenditure, to discretionary spending on specific projects. Secondly, the requests for public safety move us toward, I believe, everything that we've heard the public wants us to do. First of all, we are understaffed for patrol officers. We've been for 20 years compared to peers in the state and in the nation. We are significantly understaffed. When you have four or five patrol officers on duty on any given night, you are putting, that's too low. Saturday night, we had two separate shooting incidents several hours apart, a couple of blocks apart. That's, we are understaffed to respond to the incidents we have in Urbana. The community service responders that are the non-sworn coupled with the social worker is the beginning of an alternative response. They'll be able to handle some of the calls that come in that don't require a police response. And then the community engagement officers, the three, that's a program that Chief Boone is committed to and I believe can make a difference, particularly in South Urbana. A presence on Philo Road will make a difference in that area. And again, that's something I've heard for 20 years as a council member and mayor. That's the hotspots. That's where the data shows the incidents are happening, where the shootings are happening. And a presence there will make a difference. And again, we are following our financial policies. We expect reasonable growth. And we are not setting anybody up for failure in the future. This is a balanced budget and a sustainable one.
James?
Thank you. I do want to talk a little bit about the budget. I want to say that I do, I do think there is a reasonable question to ask about the money that is in here that's part of a pilot program that runs for three years and is funded by our fund balance. I think the question is, at the end of those three years, are we going to be comfortable saying no if the money isn't there? Or are we going to have to find other ways to fund that, either by increased valuation, increased sales tax revenue? And unfortunately, if those things aren't there, I think there's a concern that that might result in other tax increases. So I think that's a reasonable question to be asking. From the time that I became interested and started to run for city council, the question of the staffing for our police has been out there. I have talked to our former chief about that. I have observed what's been going on. I will point out that there is over $200,000 in overtime in the patrol budget. My position is, we do need to increase the number of patrol officers because we don't want to be running on an operation that is one injury away from increasing overtime, one vacation away from more overtime. And I think we're still there. I had hopes, and I watched during this time because we were also, we had a lot of vacancies. And I was hoping that over time, as we filled vacancies, we would see how that balance of staffing would come out as those were filled and officers came back from their training, because we know there's a lot of time involved with that. I don't feel like we're at a place where fully staffed is... I, I, I don't feel like, um, we're at a place where fully staffed is efficiently staffed. Um, I, you know, I'm taking in the information from the Barry Dunn study. Um, I'm taking in the input, uh, from our police chief who we had, who we hired to provide expertise in this area. I believe, um, that we will need to be hiring two or three patrol officers to achieve that space where we're talking about being efficient and not being at constant risk of additional overtime or overworked police officer. We've, we've had, um, individuals come and express concern about that. Uh, even individuals who have come and talked to us against expansion of the police have mentioned, um, the concern about over, overworking police officers. So I'm going to be supportive of some amount of increase in patrol officers. I particularly believe that the structure that the chief has proposed for staffing that would involve, in the way I understand it, if we hired, um, if we approved the deputy chief that's currently interim and hired the, uh, training sergeant, that would essentially be two new patrol officers. Um, and then, um, I'm not sure if the third, the third one is needed in, but at least those two and potentially a third one to get to that place where staffing is balanced with our current situation. I'm also interested and have been from the beginning in the outcome of the Barry Dunn study from a standpoint of reimagining, um, uh, public safety and having, uh, alternative service models. I know the, I, I believe the chief is making a proposal that is based on his experience, but he has told us that it's based on his experience in a world where it is part of the police department. Um, I, I get that, where that's coming from, but I don't think we have all the information to commit to the alternative responder model, uh, in that fashion until the Barry Dunn study is, is completed. To that end though, I believe we have to, we want to be moving forward with that as we get that information and as we have a discussion. So I would be supportive of a, an amount of money in the budget for the alternate response model that is then fleshed out and deployed based on all the information, including the final components of the Barry Dunn study and the, the outcomes from our discussion from that. And so, um, while that, that means that I'm not completely on board with, with spending all of the money that's been requested with regard to police expansion. I am supportive of some amount of that to get that patrol balance that we need for what we have and then planning for funding for the alternative response model as it gets, um, designed and implemented, um, when we have all the information that we need to do that. I am open, uh, to Grace's suggestion of adding the arborist. I'm not sure that we need to do that for the whole year. I would, I know it was talked about and suggested that maybe that would be, uh, year two part of our, uh, council goals, but I would be supportive of, um, at least having it partially in this fiscal year, maybe hiring in January, uh, so that it's not a full, a full amount on this fiscal year. It would have to be a recurring amount in the future fiscal years, but since that seemed to already be on our minds with regard to meeting that council goal, um, I don't, I don't think that is a risk. I, I am, I'm not, um, I don't think I'm going to be supportive of the transition of a million dollars from the plan as we have it, um, back on into the, the bonding picture because that would, that would be borrowing money to support, um, the social programs, um, which doesn't feel like a way to make them, uh, sustainable. I would be willing to look at something. I know the sales tax money is, uh, with groceries is not something we can plan on, um, but if we did not have that loss planned for, um, January instead of July, I would suggest that we could use some of that money to, um, try some of these things and look at these things for the future, for a future budget year, um, along with some of these questions being answered about what does the co-responder model look like? What does that cost look like, um, going forward? So, um, I think, uh, I do appreciate, um, the, the input from different council members on things that they'd like to see in the budget. I feel like that has been absent in, um, some of our past years of having an opportunity to put things out there and discuss them. I think it's totally reasonable to discuss them, but I wanted to share both with all of you and with the public that where I'm standing on, on the items that seem to be of the most import with regard to the budget as it stands. So I'm concerned about sustainability because of the pilot that's funded by fund balance. I do believe we do need to, uh, increase some patrol model to get to balance, um, with our staffing and not over, overworking the police force that we have. I do want to support a, an alternate response model, but I'm not ready to commit to the picture as it, as it stands now. I, but I think we should hold the money associated with it. And I'm, while I'm interested in maybe pursuing some of these options that Chris has suggested or investigating them, I'm not comfortable doing that on, uh, by bonding more with the fire station, um, process. Thanks.
Mary Alice.
Um, so I want to speak a little bit to, um, what James and, and what Chris have brought up in terms of, uh, additional funding for social services. Um, we spent a lot of time on the ARPA proposals. Um, we had ten million dollars that we decided would be best suited, uh, to be used in the community, um, for different effects of COVID. And so we, we had, we hired, um, RPC to administer the grant, to do the process. We had proposals, we had a whole system. It was a very long process. So my, my point in this is, is that while I feel that we should be, uh, helping homelessness services, uh, well, we should be helping fund, um, potential student summer jobs, et cetera. I think that it has to be bundled into a process and that process could look like, um, what we do with the social service funding. So I know for the past couple of years, we've really been focused on youth grants, um, programs that, you know, assist youth in multiple ways, but that's not always been the case. We haven't always only given money to youth groups. And I said this when we were talking about, uh, the council goals, which is, I, I think that it would be very appropriate, since we have that in place, agencies are used to that process and we can certainly recruit other agencies, um, but to really give guidance for that program to say, we want to focus this upcoming year on these particular elements and fund that. I think that is a, a fair process. Um, it's something that we know how to do. And so for that reason, I, I'm not going to vote yes on any of these up and down ones because I, I don't think that it has been a fair process for any of the other groups, uh, in our community to be able to participate. Um, in terms of public safety, I think one of the things that we've been hearing a lot about are alternative service models. Okay, we've, uh, had the chambers filled with lots of people talking about how they don't want a sworn officer to show up for barking dogs, for litter, um, for kind of these different things. One thing that we don't know, which is, is really hard, and as I looked at the Barry Dunn report and looked at the different calls for service, how they were broken up between criminal and non-criminal, there's been a lot of attention focused on non-criminal. Well, is non-criminal appropriate to, to send a sworn officer for that? Well, just because something's not non-criminal doesn't mean it's not dangerous. And I'm specifically thinking about things like domestic disputes. Those can be very dangerous situations. So just because in this categorization that it's non-criminal doesn't mean that it's appropriate for us to send a social worker or for us to send, uh, a police officer. That whole process that we have to determine, um, is going to take time and effort. And that's one of the reasons why we're waiting for the report from Barry Dunn. Okay, so I, I want to put that aside. And I think I said last night that I really can't see anybody from last night or tonight who's in here who is against an alternative response model. We don't know what that's going to look like, but I think everybody's for that piece. The second thing that I want to bring up is that we do have to be cognizant, um, for our residents, but also for our staff, that we recognize that there is a significant disproportionate workload versus staffing. We have to address that. Um, and for that reason, I think that we should have some additional patrol units, um, to alleviate some of that. I'm actually in favor of having two, um, non-sworn officers that would be able to take reports, um, answer small things that are not a dangerous thing. Um, I, I think that that would be a good pilot for us to see, how is that going to work? It's going to take time for us to sift through all of this information to figure out what's, what's appropriate to send person A or person B or person C. And so having those two people on staff will help us start to figure that part out. And then last but not least, I, I do want to talk a little bit about kind of how we got here. Um, so, you know, when, when this council was elected, there was a lot of stuff going on in our country, um, a lot of frankly horrible things going on in our country. Um, and I think most of us recognized while we ran for office that something had to change. We had to change how public safety, um, and public service is delivered. And through that process, um, we undertook a report to review the public safety, um, but we also recruited a new chief of police. And in that recruitment of that new chief of police, we wanted to hire somebody who could see beyond the traditional everyday public safety model. We wanted to recruit somebody who is going to give us new innovative ideas on how we could better serve the community. And, and so I think that, um, it's disingenuous of us not to at least give it a try, not to say, we hired you for this purpose, you're presenting us with ideas on how we can reshape some of this. I think we owe it to everybody who wanted to hire this person to take some of what he's offering.
Mary Alice, would you take the chair?
Sure.
I'll take the chair and the chair recognizes chair.
Thank you. Um, I think this is a, an interesting and challenging budget and I apologize to anybody if I'm giving them weird looks, I'm fighting a migraine, so hopefully it still makes sense. Um, I will say that in some ways I'm very disappointed to hear the same language that we heard when we first came into this council being said yet again for this budget, which is it's a pilot, let's just try it and see if it works. I find that very insulting as somebody who specifically requested money in the first budget that this council passed, um, to do an evaluation of alternate public, alternate models, um, that we could explore because of concerns about the crisis co-response model that was being put forward. I think if we're saying the exact same thing all these years later, that that's a huge waste of taxpayer money and a, and an insult to the work that has been put into what may not be a perfect study, but is also an incomplete study. Um, I'm deeply uncomfortable with the idea of adding an incredible increase to the police department's budget before we have completed that study. It is not a one-time cost, it is a recurring cost. Um, I do think it is financially irresponsible to make that level of commitment, um, when we do not know what other options we might want to explore. We will not have any money left to do a meaningful alternate response model if we move forward with this budget, in, in my opinion and from reading this budget. I also think that it's important for us to look at this, uh, over the years. I think that there's this, either the, the Urbana City Council doesn't support the police department or they support the police department too much is what we tend to hear from varying members of our community. I think, and all in all, this council has been very, very fair, um, in terms of listening to feedback from our community. Uh, we did ask for somebody different and we decided that it was worth the investment to put funds behind paying a, a chief of police more than we historically ever have. Um, we have paid for incentives because we want to recruit good officers and want to be able to retain them and keep them here. We have approved, uh, an imperfect, um, agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police because we were honoring our recognition that we had appointed individuals to negotiate that contract. I think these are all signs of a willingness to work in a spirit of collaboration, um, to look at the larger picture. But I also think it's this council's responsibility to look at the budget as a whole, right? We're, when we're talking about an over two million dollar recurring expense with no long-term plan from some portions of it, I think that that is irresponsible. I think that Chief Boone has done exactly what we've asked of him and that he has put forth his vision for change. I think that's admirable and I think there's a conversation about what is sustainable and feasible at this time, but Urbana is a small city. Urbana is a city with a disproportionately high percentage of low-income individuals. And when we think about where are we going to put our money and how are we going to set up the next council and mayor to be successful, I think we need to think about the impact of making long-term commitments in terms of staffing and resources, not just in one department, but across the city. Uh, we regularly hear from community members, we regularly hear from staff that other departments are also understaffed, that other departments are so understaffed that law enforcement is getting asked to come and do things that they really shouldn't have to be doing. Um, so I think that as we're looking at staffing, if we're going to look at who is understaffed, we only have certain pieces of the information, um, to be able to make those decisions. And there are specific position or positions in the city government that this council has also said that we want to support. The arborist being one of them. We've also discussed increased staffing and, uh, community development, so we would have the capacity to apply for more federal grants. I think that it's shameful, quite frankly, that the clerk's office only has two individuals. Um, I think that's not even something that's been part of this conversation because we are so focused on one important department, but one department that is asking for an inordinate, uh, percentage of the resources, resources of this city. Um, so while I am very open to talking about what feels appropriate and financially reasonable, I don't think it's appropriate or financially reasonable to ask the city to make up for twenty years of people knowing that we were making bad, uh, bad staffing decisions. Um, I think if that's something that previous councils or previous mayors had wanted to address, that is something that we could have been doing piece by piece. I don't think it's appropriate for us to trying to make up for all of that now. Um, I will say too, I'm, as much as I appreciate some of the organizations that are lift, uh, listed in this up-down proposal, I am not comfortable with that approach of funding either. I think thinking about the impact of taking on more debt, um, is something that we need to take very seriously. And I also do think that there should be a process for allocating funds to social services. They should not be earmarked, um, by any individual, um, and that there should be a competitive process to make sure that we are utilizing those funds in, um, the most responsible way that we can. And I guess I will stop there for now.
Would you like the chair back?
Yes, please.
All right, it's all yours.
Thanks.
Further discussion? Charisse.
Um, I'm not quite sure how, how I want to say this, but, because I agree with a lot of what you just said. I agree a lot of what Mary Alice said too around, about, uh, we don't want to appear to be disingenuous and not help. The thing that came, you know, the police department, you're saying that the police department wants an inordinate amount of funds to, but these are things that we asked them to do as well. Um, I, I think, um, from looking at what has been presented, um, a community engagement, um, something is extremely important. And, and I say that because I'm looking at, at the, the, um, the crime statistics that we get every quarter or month, you know? And what I've noticed is that in, yeah, in some wards, the stuff has gone down, but in one ward in particularly, everything- ward in particularly, everything is more, there's more red, everything has gone up. And a part of that is, I know from probably lack of, there being a lack of patrol officers. I grew up in Urbana. Growing up on the North End, I remember, especially when I was in junior high and high school, seeing, especially during the summer, patrol officers throughout Ward Three, especially in my subdivision. Because there were always a lot of shootings, even when I was a kid. And Douglas Park is nearby, it's in Champaign, but it's nearby, and all of these things, you know, I don't know that the police being there actually was a deterrent or anything, but what I do know is that I felt safe walking down the street, you know? And I look at the one ward that has so much red in the column, that people can't feel safe. And I think part of public safety means the public feels safe. And if that means that we have a couple of more patrol officers, I think that's what we need to have. There's so many people, and the other thing too is, we want to keep, we talk about how we're going to pay for it, and the revenue, and so on and so forth. There's a lot of retail theft happening in all of our wards, where there's retail. We want the businesses to also feel safe. And that's kind of difficult. And like I said, I've experienced and I've observed, when the police are called and nobody shows up, that's not cool. I mean, you know, they show up, but they show up like long after what needs to be done is done. And by then, a person is just so, you know, they feel so like, "Why didn't anybody come and not save me, but help me?" Because that is part of their job, that is what they do, that is their job. And it is, as much as we don't want to appear, and some of us may not want to appear to help the police at all, you know, and, you know, that's fine. Except, I can't think of a time when I've been violated, and I've had vehicles stolen and vehicles broken into, not here, well, once here, but basically, you know, it's not like being, that's a violation of my, what I feel is my safety. And you need somebody, and the community engagement people could really help with that kind of thing, as could an increase in patrol officers. Patrol officers shouldn't have to feel like they may also be walking in a dangerous situation. You know, if you know somebody has your back. I just feel that after the past couple of years and seeing what the shortage actually does, it's the people who most need the help that end up being most impacted by the lack of that help. So I think we need to think heavily about, instead of what our ideology is, what the reality is. So that's all I want to say.
Other discussion? Grace.
Thank you. I appreciate all the interesting inputs here in this discussion, I think it's been very productive. So I do appreciate and thank us for having this a little further ahead of time than in years past. I will clarify, I hear what people are saying and do agree, as far as some of Chris's recommendations here for bundling them into a social service pot that has a due process to allocate, I think similar to the environmental grants that I kind of did on the fly last year, which our wonderful grant manager has been working on a process to get that going. It's taken some time, but I think that's an example of how we can allocate a pot of money for a purpose, and then go through the proper channels to have it given out from there. So I am in support of, you know, combining a social service pot of money. It seems like we're really limited. I'm really sick of hearing that we can only spend 15% of CDBG money on social services, and so that's the limit. When we have general fund money, we have other money, we don't have to only use CDBG for social services and call that our limit. So I am definitely in favor of having a set amount that says, you know, social service increases, and then work towards the due processes to allocate them. As much as I would, I would support, I would be okay with the option of, as James suggested, two or three additional patrol officers being the only expansion, I would be open to that. As far as flagging money for an alternative response, and then figuring out the details, I don't love that. I think it's better than just saying we already have the model and going from there, but I'm really worried that it's just going to be out of the hands of council and the public at that point, though it's been made abundantly clear that the council only controls the budget of the police department, and no other policies or operations whatsoever. So I would much prefer that we could do a budget amendment whenever that process is ready and figured out, it may not even be within this next fiscal year. So I'm definitely in support of continuing to explore an alternative response program, and would prefer that we just wait for a budget amendment when we're ready, instead of having the money there, and then no further input from council and the public is required. I definitely agree with investing in those community resources. I see some value in the police community engagement and knowing the community members, and the community members knowing them, and having some needs for patrol. But I think that the first need is actual helpful resources, if we're talking about South Philo area, I would love to see actual community resources there, like for connections to housing, funding other social services that people might need. I think that there is a problem sometimes with, I think police can make things more safe sometimes, and I think they can make things not safe, less safe sometimes. I watched a video in a CPRB meeting, it's a public thing, of UPB officers who chased, tackled, and tased a young black man whose only crime or suspicious activity was changing directions to walk away from the police because he was scared and feared for exactly what ended up happening. I'm worried about those types of situations happening, that someone crosses the street to avoid the police, and that's reason to act like this, and then arrest them and say that, "We caught a criminal because now he resisted arrest." I think it can very easily put more people in harm's way. And I think we really need to consider the consequences, and I would much rather see actual community resources in that part of town if we want to focus on it.
Any other comments? Chris?
I enjoyed the discussion, and I heard very thoughtful things from everybody, I really appreciate that. I guess, I'm still confused, there's this acceptance that we're short patrol officers. May 28th, walked out of my apartment, woman crying, standing there, not injured, not bleeding, but crying, distressed, needed help, no doubt about it. But there were three Urbana police officers around her. That's great. But that means two officers left their beat to deal with just this one person crying. James Kilgore showed me on his cell phone, heart attack, person survived, three squad cars there to answer. Again, two officers left their beat and to assist. That's great, that's not a criticism of what the police did. Martell Miller, I watched on his cell phone, he's got video of the smell of marijuana on the driver's side passenger, I mean, the driver's side of the car. Nine squad cars showed up for that. So I keep getting told, "We don't have enough police officers," when I'm seeing, "You don't seem to have enough to do." I mean, we have multiple responses to very simple calls in just the last few months since we've really urgently been talking about it. So I am still confused. And I read all 166 pages, every line of that Barry Dunn report, I don't understand it. I really don't. And I'm shopping it around, we're a university town, there's smart people here, I shop it around, look at pages from here to here. Do you, what do you see? What do you understand? They don't understand it either, how Barry Dunn arrived at the conclusions they did. So I'm just going to put out there that, and what I wanted to ask the chief last night, and there just wasn't time, and what I'm hearing from the citizens, at least from the ones I talked to, and I'm going door-to-door about this, I would just ask if it's possible that any, before any major increase in police staffing happens, could we form a community task force to further study the public safety issues in Urbana going forward in a more community, with a task force, with community members and stakeholders? It's recommended in the 21st Century Police document that Obama put out that this be done, Barry Dunn suggested we form a committee. So I would just put that out there, I would like to ask if that could happen, so, thank you.
Grace.
Thank you. I think that's a great idea, I'm definitely down for having that community task force. And the question I forgot to ask was, this came up last night, and I did finally find in the budget where you've got overtime broken down for police, page 74, I think, right? And I think this was back to Jay's question last night about why is overtime, both regular and step overtime, proposed to increase even with all of these staff expansions?
So if nothing were going to change, we would propose some small level of increase just to reflect wage adjustments, right? So on July 1, everybody's wages are going to increase based on the collective bargaining agreement, therefore their overtime rate will also increase.
But did we take into account that we would expect less overtime number of hours with all these new officers?
So I'm going to ask for help from one of the two friendly police department people over there, but I'm not, I don't believe that we reflected any savings in overtime.
If you give me a second, I'll put some slides up, I've got some overtime numbers. I have not had the opportunity to double-check these, as a request to staff came in, I was able to make the request this afternoon, so. But our old budget books are published, correct? We can double-check these, or they can double-check these? Apparently I didn't click it correctly. All right, so I've got FY '21, '22, '23, and year-to-date '24, and I had the executive assistant pull patrol and CID overtime. You'll see in '21, we were under budgets in the patrol division for the most part, but double our numbers in the investigations division for overtime. I would attribute the underspending of budget in '21 to COVID. We put pretty significant restrictions on officer activity during COVID. For example, we literally said, "Don't stop cars unless you absolutely have to," you know, just things like that. So we were really asking officers just to sort of focus on the key things. '21 is an outlier compared to the other years. '22, this is where bifocals come in handy. '22, we're about ballpark, $50,000 over budget in regular overtime. That represents things like callback, holdover, patrol activity. These are not optional pieces of overtime that the patrol officers work, this is what they are in fact mandated to work. And it could be from, like I said, late calls for service, it could be someone has got a vacation on the books, and we don't have enough staffing. There are certain circumstances under which we have to honor requests for vacation, it's just the way it is. We can't just deny vacation to avoid overtime in all circumstances. So staffing absolutely has an impact on these overtime numbers, specifically in the patrol division. So like I said, if someone's sick or on vacation, that has an implication as well. So these are '22 numbers. Again, in the investigations division, we're double our budget there, that's callouts. Someone shot, someone sexually assaulted, we have, you know, a serious battery where someone is significantly hurt and a detective responds, they come out. FY '23, the same thing, $66,000 over in the patrol division. That's, what, closer to 30% over? Back-of-the-envelope math, same reasons, staffing, calls for service. Again, the investigations division, we're double our budget there as well. And this is year-to-date '24. Smidge over $50,000 in patrol on regular overtime, and not quite double on CID. So that's what I was able to get together in a couple hours this afternoon, I hope that addresses your concerns, yes?
James?
Just a quick question, on the previous two slides, what were our vacancies during those two fiscal years?
I don't have those numbers offhand, this is what I can tell you, when I took over as interim, in fairly short order, at our peak, we were about 20% vacant. And what Deputy Chief Bain and I did, the entire time we were in interim status, so not quite 18 months, was higher. I, and I think Elizabeth will agree with this sentiment, I was persistent with HR that we continue to hire. You know, the thing about patrol officers is, you can't just hire somebody and have them be useful in three weeks. It takes a year to have a useful patrol officer. And so turning that ship and turning that 20% vacancy rate into something that is not painful to patrol officers is, it's a process. It's a process, and I am thankful that HR heeded our call and brought us candidates. I am thankful that the candidates they brought were great men and women. I was worried, I was really worried. This is not a, when I was testing to be a police officer, it used to be that hundreds of people would show up, it's not the case now. So finding quality candidates is really a difficult thing, and we have found some really remarkable men and women to serve at the Urbana Police Department.
All right, thanks.
Can I ask a quick question, Grace? I think I'd still like clarification on why we are in the proposed budget anticipating increased overtime in FY '25 with all the new positions, because we don't even have data for full staffing.
Can you give me a specific line so I know?
Yeah, absolutely. So this is the one that Grace mentioned on page 74.
Are you talking about 120, 201, 501, 31, regular overtime? And so you want to know why it's going from 202 to 211?
Correct.
I presume that's the same answer that Ms. Hannan gave, which was raises, costs.
I think that's still not clear, though, if, why would we need more overtime, or even comparable overtime if we had so many more, like, even if we weren't talking about the increased positions, right? If we were just at full...
Are you talking about 120, 201, 501, 31?
Mm-hmm.
Regular overtime?
Mm-hmm.
And so you want to know why it's going from 202 to 211?
Correct.
I presume that's the same answer that Ms. Hannan gave, which was raises, costs.
I think that's still not clear, though, if, why would we need more overtime, or even comparable overtime, if we had so many more? Like, even if we weren't talking about the increased positions, right? If we were just at full staffing, we would expect overtime to decrease, correct?
Well, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Versus when we're understaffed?
No.
Why would that not be?
I don't know of any police department in the nation that doesn't go over their overtime One of the things that I, through my observations, and the way I manage, I know overtime is going to go up. Not a whole lot, but it will go up. Point example, any major event, there should be emergency action plans and staffing for those events. We don't do that here. We don't have emergency action plans for events. The Jettie Rose event, which is about 2,000 people, there should be officers detailed to those events in an overtime capacity. Any event requires ICS planning. I am not going to have CNN with a hot mic in front of me saying, "Chief, you knew these many people were gathering, why weren't there officers?" So overtime is always going to incur. Maybe not at the rate if we're fully staffed, and fully staffed doesn't mean minimally staffed, it means adequately staffed. So overtime is never perfect. You will find no police department in the nation with, "This is our budget. Stay under that budget." Where I'm from, we blew our budget every year, every year.
So to clarify, because I actually find that concerning, you anticipate the continuation of significant overspending over budget and overtime? Is that, so that's one piece?
So what I said was, not at this rate, that's what I said, but overtime will continue. It's just a part of doing business.
I totally understand that overtime will continue, but I believe I heard you say that you anticipate that overtime will continue to exceed what's budgeted. And I'm stressing this because we're being asked to pass a budget that has no wiggle room. So it's important for us to understand that.
I think you're asking me to give you a bottom line. What I can tell you is, if I'm chief and we have these events, such as the marathon and whatever else we may have that we have not manned, I'm going to request staffing to be there. So if you hadn't done it in the past and you're doing something new, it's going to incur overtime.
So I think that you're answering my initial question, but I was hoping that you could also answer the question of, and I appreciate that. It sounds like you're saying that the increase in overtime that's in the budget would reflect increased presence at events.
That's correct.
But I also want to make sure that I'm hearing you correctly, that what is reflected on these charts, to some degree, maybe not at the same level, is what you would anticipate to continue, which is blowing past what is in the budget on overtime?
What I'm saying, based on my 30-plus years' experience, I have never, ever came under our overtime budget.
Has there ever been a conversation about accurately budgeting for overtime?
It's impossible.
So that we can actually plan?
It's impossible.
Okay.
Now, I will say this. Because of staffing issues in most departments during 2021, overtime was really through the roof because you just didn't have enough staffing. People were, you know, resigning, quitting, things of that nature. But it's just very, very difficult to say, "This is your overtime budget, stay under." It's just not possible. You can't plan what may happen. There may be a traumatic event here that requires, you know, officers at that particular scene for a number of hours. It's just impossible to predict the amount of overtime you're going to have.
Okay. Appreciate that answer.
So I was going to say, it's kind of normal during the year. There will be turnover, so there would be some savings in the salary budget due to vacancies as positions turn over. And so what it looks to me like here is, you know, some of this probably driven by vacancies, there probably should have been transfers from salaries into overtime to cover it. So there's flexibility within that budget for personnel in police.
Yeah, and let me be very clear about what these numbers were, because these were the instructions that I gave to the executive assistant. "I want you to pull the original budget number, and I want you to pull year and actual figures." There were adjustments, and so the budgets were realigned with the reality through transfers as Elizabeth was just describing.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I'm looking at the estimate versus the proposed, so I would assume the estimate has taken those alterations into account. Is that not correct?
Great question. I don't know the answer to. One thing that, you know, you were talking about, you know, predicting, I think the investigations budget is a great example of the unpredictability of overtime. You know, in terms of trying to determine what staff responds to a particular scene, I've never said, "You know, we're pushing our overtime budget, I'm only going to have two detectives respond to that murder instead of everyone."
Yeah, I appreciate that, and I think, again, just because what we're being asked is right at that threshold of what is even allowable by policy, and so if there is an anticipation that it very well may go above what's written in the proposed budget, that's something that I will say for myself as a council member, I think is important to take into consideration. But I know Grace had a question as well.
Yeah, not a question. I wanted to, that's okay, I wanted to refocus it, that this is the council discussion on the budget, and we had the staff report already. I appreciate people being a resource here, but wanted to make sure we know which part we're in. I did just want to point out that as far as investigations, has a separate overtime category, it looks like. What we're looking at here is just patrol. We're not looking at investigations currently.
Yeah, what I showed to you was, on the left side was patrol, and on the right side was investigations.
Okay, that's the CID, that's investigations. Thank you. And I did just want to say that when we compare this to fire department, which I understand is not going to be an apples-to-apples comparison, but if we assumed, you know, you have the same kind of overtime pay, so hours are kind of reflected by the dollar amount, the police department is already substantially under the fire department in overtime, even with these new, these continued safer employees that we have there. We've gotten, you know, as we saw last night, the fire department overtime down from over 800,000 a year to proposed 343,000 this year. So I did just want to point out, when we're talking about overtime, that the fire department does have even more and seems to be able to reduce the overtime with increased number of staff. And it sounds like this will not reduce overtime with increased number of staff in the police department.
Chris?
Yeah, I just want to deposit a couple more questions. When we look at overtime for the police, do we divide it by 20 patrol officers and do we divide it by $59 an hour?
I'm not quite sure what you're asking.
Well, we went back and forth on email about overtime.
Oh, right. Yeah, that was a month ago.
Yeah, a while back, I know, and I don't expect you to remember it. That's okay. But, and we went through this to determine the number of hours of overtime, not just the amount of money, but the number of hours. And it came to about 4,000 hours when you look at the $59 an hour rate.
I assume that's correct. Your memory's better than mine.
Yeah, okay. Well, anyway, I'll just throw that as part of the consideration because you can derive, and again, it's unrealistic to ever mathematically do even averages on the police profession because there are so many variables in so many ways.
Sure.
But you can get a sense for the amount of stress on officers regarding overtime when you look at it in some kind of way like that. But anyway, so I just want to throw those considerations into the mix.
Yeah, I'm just going to say, I mean, overtime is very complicated in both police and fire, and I think there are some things that are maybe somewhat predictable, but there are many things that are not. You know, we can't predict duty injuries, and if somebody in either police or fire has a duty injury and is unable to work, and that puts them at minimum staffing, they're going to be calling back, calling somebody in on overtime. So there's duty injuries, people have family emergencies and sick kids, and, you know, it's, we can't predict, you know, how many major crimes we're going to have that require a response from our investigators. It's, it's, it's what, remember I told you the general fund is a moving target in terms of budgeting and making projections? Overtime in police and fire is the same kind of thing.
Any further discussion? Grace?
I guess just wondering where we go from here. Again, reiterate that I do really appreciate the conversation and all the council members and staff who have contributed. I'm just wondering where we go next. I would imagine that we would hopefully continue this discussion next week, and we have a lot of stuff on the consent agenda, so maybe not too many items of business, and continue this discussion. I think we've flushed out a lot of great things to think about, and I would like to, hopefully next week, maybe get to, you know, doing some straw polls, kind of actually narrowing some things down, if we want to do that before the COW and council where it's approved, which has seemed stressful in the past, but I'm absolutely willing to do again and plan to. But if we'd rather do it ahead of time, I think we should have this conversation next week.
Any other thoughts on that or anything else, Virginia?
Okay. Yes? I'm just going to say that I think from the perspective of being able to get the numbers together for the budget ordinance and to have that timely, it would be easier for staff to have that, for you to have that conversation next week so that we can take away and work on it. Even as it is, we'll have a very limited amount of time before the agenda goes out for the committee meeting on the 17th to actually get the changes together.
Grace?
Can I just clarify, from the mayor, if we plan to have this discussion, or if I can request it, and if somebody seconded it now?
I will.
To the clerk? I believe we've already penciled in for a discussion next week in our planning.
Anything else on this discussion item before we move on to the next agenda item?
Okay. Thank you again for the information. We'll continue the discussion next committee, the whole, it sounds like, or, no, next council meeting, next week. Next item on the agenda is council input and communications. Anything that anyone would like to share? Okay. With no further business in front of this committee, this meeting is adjourned.